Good, I'd like to call this meeting in order. Ask us all to rise. Mr. Timniak, if you'd lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to try and see if we can speak loud enough without the mics. If that becomes a problem at any point, if you could just let me know. Now, we do have a mic up here that we can pass from person to person to make sure that's appropriate. Uh, let's see. First off, as we're going through this, uh, to the board. Okay. Whatever you say, Joe. As we go through this, what I'd like to do, uh, from a process standpoint, is look at, moving the whole budget having that before us, including revenues and WPCA. Then go through and, um, look at making the adjustments. Uh, I know, um, I relayed some yesterday. I believe you have some also. And then go back and at the end, make a motion to accept revenues as amended, Board of Ed budget as amended, the Town General Fund budget as amended, and the WPCA budget as amended, and then make a motion to accept the entire budget. That way, there's no question we approve every single change we made. We can go through and literally go department by department if you feel that's necessary to review this. That takes a bit of time and we historically have done it, but I think, I think you all have done your homework. I know I've done my homework, so I don't think we need to go through quite that approach.
So you're going to put everything before us at once?
Everything before us. Then we'll talk through the adjustments.
Okay.
Uh, we've got some revenue adjustments. We've got some, what I'm going to call administrative adjustments that came up during the hearings. I've got some things I'd like to propose. I know you have some things you'd like to propose. We'll just take it through those.
Okay.
Does that sound okay? And I think that is both complete, but also gets us through this in a reasonable amount of time.
Yep, sure.
All right. So if that's okay, with a start. Item number three, public executive session, there is no public comment. Uh, approval for the fiscal year 2017-2018 budget, including all departments and Board of Ed and the Water Pollution Control Authority. May I have a motion to put the entire budget before us?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, the entire budget is before us. Uh, if I can, I've got a few items I'd like to suggest as we go through this. Uh, and I, Linda, do we all have a copy of this sheet?
The 2-2 at the bottom?
2-2 at the bottom, yes. Uh, I'd like to take what I'm going to call section one.
I don't.
Linda, can you get, we need one copy for Chris. All right, Linda, if you don't hear any of these, please let me know so we can make sure that we get those. But from the top, with respect to the proposed budget, which currently sits at $308,762,860, and that represents a 4.48% increase in the mill rate. Two immediate adjustments. One is from contingency, Department 2010, object code 58010, on $919,000, and that's a decrease to contingency. These are expense adjustments for accounting treatment, this one and the next one. We have the ability to take these as revenue adjustments. We're taking those as, um, contra expenses or expense adjustments. Did I say that correctly, Linda? All right, what that does is with the budget going down, that allows, as the expense budget goes down, based on our policy of increase, for any increases in our budget, we also increase a supplemental contribution to surplus. By reducing the expenses, that lets us not have to put in additional contribution to surplus money. So I am moving that amendment and also Department 130, debt service, object 5860 for redemption of bonds, and that's a reduction in expenses of $1,122,313. This is for a combined expense adjustment of $2,041,313. In addition, I would move Department 2020, contribution to surplus, and that's object 58970, that's as in contribution to surplus, and that's $190,000 reduction. The total of those three amendments would be $2,231,313 as a reduction to the budget. May I have a motion to, uh, may I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion?
None.
No.
All right, these are mostly items suggested by our finance department as a way to minimize the budget. So, item second and, motion in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that item is amended. Uh, I would also note that as part of that, uh, in order to make these, to clearly make these, we also have to do associated revenue items. So may I have a motion to accept the associated revenue items? These are expense reductions. We need to then, um, increase the, it's an increase on the, reduction on the revenue side?
Revenue decrease.
Revenue decrease on that side. May I have a motion to accept the revenue decreases?
More.
A second?
A second.
And those are all just to affect this accounting change? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So those amendments are done. All right. And that gets us down to a, that gets us down to an overall budget of $306,531,547, which represents a 4.4% increase in the mill rate. Now, there are a number of other items that came up during the Board of Select meetings, and if it's okay with you gentlemen, I'll just read through those and we'll do another overall amendment. If there's any item in here that needs clarification, please let me know and we'll get that, uh, done, but this list was compiled by Linda Gardner. Department 1310, retirees benefit, object 52310, retirement contribution to the town, a reduction of $9,235. Department 1310, retirees benefit, 52311, object code, retirement contribution police and fire, a reduction of $40,000. Department 1320, active employee benefits, object code 52100, this is health insurance for actives, and this is a bigger, the biggest one, which is a reduction of $273,247. And Linda, just to confirm, that's based on the latest available information?
Yeah.
And, and that's our health insurance projections through the end of February, correct? And this is a pretty standard adjustment we make each time in budget year when we get the latest insurance adjustments through the end of February. There'll be one more judgment, adjustment that will be available to the Board of, or to the RTM if they choose to act on it, which would be the adjustment through the end of March. They'll have that when they vote on the first Monday in May. Next, Department 3090, tax collector, object 5110, regular payroll, a reduction of $21,878. Object 3090, tax collector, uh, depart, object 52200, that's social security, $1,637?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three dollars, sorry, thank you. And then Department 3110, this is IT, uh, object 55300, and that's in communications, and that's $5,400. The result of those changes would be a $351,443 expense reduction. Because of those, we also can afford an additional reduction. This is Department 2020, contribution to surplus, object code 58970, and that's a $60,000 reduction. And that brings all of that to a total of $411,443. Uh, I will make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Any, any discussion? Everybody clear on what those are?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So that's done. That now brings us to a budget of $3,000, uh, $306,120,104, and at the moment, that's standing at a 4.28% increase in the mill rate. As we go through, from here, some additional expenses, I, adjustments I'd like the Board to consider. First is the Department 820. This is that teacher retirement payment from the state, and that's an object code of 58910, and that would be a reduction of $9,194,608. I'd like to have, make that move. Is there a second? We should probably do these one at a time?
I think that's best.
If that's okay?
Yep.
All right. So then I'm going to ask, any further discussion on that item?
No.
Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, Board of Ed. This is Department 88010, object code 58900, Board of Ed budget, and I would motion that we restore $2 million to the Board of Ed budget. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's done. All right, there are a, next range is a group that goes to the library. Uh, I'm not sure if there's a better way to do that other than one at a time?
Just go one at a time.
Yeah, all right. All right, this is Department 7010. This is the library main. Object code 5130, or 51030, it's part-time payroll, and it's 32, it would be an additional $32,400. May I have a, uh, second?
Second.
All right. That item is now bef, that amendment is now before us. Any discussion?
Is this to restore the, the weekend hours?
Uh, it's 3240, I believe that's what it is, but I can check with the library director if you would like. Uh, sure.
Yes, it is, but also the lines, the pay differential ones are Sunday. No problem.
Uh, one, one, just this line at the moment, Karen, but thank you. Thank you. Uh, all right, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. That's restored. Department 7010, library main, object code 51110, that's pay differential. That's $29,000. Moving that be restored. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right. That item, amendment is now before us. Any further discussion?
No.
No.
If I could, Karen, was this the line you were referring to?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That item is restored to the budget. Department 7010, library main, 56180, library material. This would be a $179,645 expense restored to the budget. May I have a second?
Uh, for discussion purposes, sure.
All right. Item seconded, the amendment is now before us. You have something you want to discuss about that?
Uh, this is one of those things which I would love to do, uh, and restore this back into, into play. Unfortunately, this goes towards the tax rate uncertainty we have in the state of Connecticut, keeping things low. So at this time, uh, you know, we had the budget meetings, we went through everything. This is a, a situation which I'd love to restore, but it's one of those things I think we're going to have to live without until the state gets on firmer footing and we have more stability coming, uh, from the state and our own tax base.
All right. Mr. Bateson, do you have any thoughts on that?
Um, I, I agree with Mr. Timniak. I, these, there's a, there's a couple more items in here that I just really, I'm not prepared to go full steam ahead yet. Too much uncertainty out there.
All right, well, just, uh, two things. One, I think that library is important. I think that certainly having a library materials, um, supported is important so that there is a reason to use a library in addition. I both agree with you and disagree with you, Mr. Timniak. I certainly agree that the state is not on stable foundation. My concern is the state's not going to be on stable foundation, and things that we cut today, I don't see the state being in any great shape next year, and I don't see this number being restored next year, uh, in terms of something will be able to support that. So it is, um, certainly, um, at some point, we're cutting our library budget by one-third in terms of material, and for the foreseeable future, that's what we'll be looking at, because I don't see the state making any significant changes. In fact, I expect the state to be in worse shape next year, and I expect that we'll be back here looking for additional cuts next year. Since it did not have a second, oh, it did have a second.
It did.
All right, sorry. Thank you for doing that, Mr. Timniak. Uh, all in favor of this amendment? One, all opposed. Two, the amendment fails. That's stepping down. Next up, Department 7011, library, and this is at Fairfield Woods, and this is 51030, object code, this is part-time payroll, and it's a, uh, motion to restore $26,815. May I have a second?
Second.
All right. That I, that amendment is now before us to restore the part-time payroll dollars. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That item, amendment passes and is restored to the budget. Department 7011, library, Fairfield Woods, 51110, this is pay differential, uh, and it's a motion to restore $16,000 in pay differential. May I have a second?
Second.
All right. That amendment is now before us. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Next up, uh, lib, Department 7011, library-dash-Fairfield Woods, 56 depart, objects, sorry, 56180, and this is library material, and this is restoration in the amount of $16,040. May I have a motion to, uh, may I have a second? Because I'll move it.
No, I see what the same thing. So a second.
All right. Had no second. The item fails. My comments would be the same as last time. At some point, uh, we're building ourselves quite a cliff to overcome here. Next up, uh, Department 5030, Public Works Operations, uh, object code 57000. This is capital for a six-wheel dump truck in the amount of $195,000 to be restored. May I have a second?
Yeah, I'm up.
All right, no second. That item fails. All right, next up, Department 5030, which is Public Works Operations, object 57000, capital, a six-wheel dump truck, uh, in the amount of $195,000 to be restored. Is there a second? That item fails for no second. Uh, we did have a plan, uh, for Public Works and equipment replacement, and I am concerned that we're getting, um, off track on that and behind with these two pieces of equipment not being here. DPW had laid out a very extensive plan, uh, of getting four pieces of equipment a year, and this starts to get us behind in what we're doing.
Right. It, to piggyback on that, I understand the plan was in place. It was included in their budget. It was reduced by you in your budget. Uh, we still have the same crisis we had before. Uh, we're still going to be ending up giving the taxpayers of Fairfield an increase, which is not what I'd like to do. Uh, I'm going to go back to what I said before. I hope that the state of Connecticut, and I'm going to put my faith in them, finds a way to get on more stable ground, and I know they're talking about new revenue projections, uh, and it's a way to circle back and hit the taxpayers in another avenue. But until they get stationary, we need to find out what the new normal is, and this is a year we need to hold back as a town to assess where we're at, and it, the term kicking the can down the road, I don't particularly like. It's living within our means, and, you know, this is going to be a year where we have to work on, you know, duct tape and, and what we can to make sure these, the current fleet we have hits the road, uh, and if things change, we can go back and we can assess.
Yeah. Mr. Bateson, if you have any comments?
I'll follow up on that, and this, this will apply to all four pieces of equipment. There was a very spirited discussion at the Board of Finance, and I thought Jim Walsh was very vocal about it, you know? Well, when you said the plan, I mean, I was a strong advocate of the plan three or four years ago. And then, you know, the current year we're in, '17, got blown out of the water because the state sent us a bill for half a million dollars, and it, or took away half a million dollars in, in the middle of the year, and that's, you know, we basically departed from the plan then. Rightfully so, because money was tight. I think that, you know, given what we're taking out the nine million, if we want to revisit, think about the trucks, that's fine, but I'm just not there yet, because I think now we need to revisit the whole plan in light of what we're going to do. What's going to happen? Where, what are our priorities going to be moving forward? And right now, I'll go on what Mr. Bartlet said and what Mr. Michelangelo said in the finance. Yes, they're not happy about it. I'm not happy about it, but we can make do for a year until we, you know, collect our resources and figure out where we're going to go.
Okay, I just, um, a couple thoughts. One is, is when we got cut a half million dollars in, in the middle of the year, that didn't impact, um, Public Works and certainly not our truck capital account at that point. However, um, you know, as we look at this, we did get, instead of $16 million being adjusted, we had, uh, we're taking nine million of that out, that gets us down to $7 million in negative adjustments, um, from the state for the most part. The, we have the opportunity to stay on track here, uh, and you're right, we're going to need it in future years. If we're taking it out this year, it is very unlikely it's going back in next year, and that puts us further and further behind on whatever plan. The state is not fixing their problems by next year. The state is going to be in worse shape next year. The state's going to come back with additional cuts. We're taking things out now. They are not going back in next year. We, uh, it would be the same, actually, it would be a higher tax increase in order to keep them in next year. We keep them in this year, we have a shot, uh, at keeping them around next year, and that would be my concern long-term. Uh, we've got to be careful what we're doing, and we need to think it more than one year at a time.
And my, on that same thought, my very serious concern is the real estate values in Fairfield, and the real estate values in the state of Connecticut is people are fleeing the state. So we need to do everything we possibly can to keep our tax rate as low as we possibly can, so that we are still attractive to people who might want to move here.
Yep. Mr. Timniak, to me, that's like not repairing the leak in the roof. At some point, you can say you save money, but in the long run, it costs you more. In this case, it could very well cost us more as we go through that, uh, and making Fairfield less attractive to them too isn't going to help us retain residents nor get them to move here. Uh, moving on. Uh, next up, Department 5030, Public Works Operations, 57000, capital backhoe, uh, and that's a, uh, motion to restore $136,580. Uh, may I have a second? All right, probably with the same comments, I suspect that item dies without a second. Next up, Department 5030, Public Works Ops, capitals, uh, object code 57000, capital, uh, street sweeper, and that would be a motion to restore $208,000. Is there a second? Next up, 5030, Public Works Operations, 57002, asphalt paving, and that's a motion to restore a million dollars. May I have a motion? Uh, may I have a second? Wow, no asphalt?
No, I think there's still two million in asphalt in the budget.
Yeah, we've got two million.
There's still, we're still putting two million dollars.
That's about half of what we have, uh, committed and planned to do, uh, going back a few years.
What did we have last year, 2.7?
No. I don't, I, actually, I'd have to check. The original, the original request was 3.3?
Yeah, last, last year, I think we approved 2.7 at the end.
Three million was approved last year.
All right. Thank you, Joe. Three million was approved last year.
I think it was three, 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 three,
know, could be lived with while we look, look towards the future, you know, so.
Yeah, I mean, we've got, go ahead, sorry.
No, the same thing. I mean, when I sat through the budget meeting, I wasn't happy to hear that we were going from three to two. But, you know, Mr. Bartlett walked us through, said, yes, I can make do, I can make do. And all of a sudden, when we decide that, you know, we're going to handle the accounting for the state problems in a different manner, I don't view that as like found money. I view that as, this is, this is going to minimize my tax rate going forward, where we can sit back and assess how we're going to deal with our now bankrupt partner at the state level for 2019. That's the way I'm viewing this. I really look at this as like, let's hunker down for 12 months, figure out a plan going forward to deal with our now defunct partner. That's the way I'm looking at it. I'd love to put it back, but I just, I'm not there. There's too many icebergs out there. I just think we just need to slow the ship down.
All right, and this is, this is paving. What you're basically saying is, we're going to pave less every year going forward, and we know that's not enough to keep up with our paving maintenance. We know the roads will.
I'm not saying that this is going to be the norm, that two million is going to be the new norm. If we can figure out, if next year, the taxpayer sits up and says, we have a more, I mean, this happened, this is a compressed timeframe where we're trying to fix this problem. A problem of this magnitude from the state, what we had, I think it's going to take 12 months to unwind. And I think we need more feedback from the public. Yeah, we're supposed to do three million, 3.5 million in roads a year, I get that. But that means 4% tax. Is that what you want?
No, actually, it means 2%.
No, I know what it says here, but next year, if we're going to face more issues from the state, I'm saying it could be 4%. Then what do I do? Is that what the taxpayer wants? It's been too compressed at this level. I just think we need another 12 months to figure that out.
Just to be clear, if we keep it in this year, then we don't have to increase the budget next year to add it back. If we take it out, then we have to increase the budget next year to add it back. That's setting up a tax cliff in the future.
I don't agree with that philosophy, though.
That's math.
No, I, that's the way you look at that math. I don't.
No, it's math. You can add it up. If you take it out this year, you've got to put it back next year. It's going to cost you more in tax dollars to put it back. We've been through that too many times. All right. I don't have a total for what that means in terms of what we have adjusted our budget. I did have a total before we made this. Lynda, do you have a total for that?
I have mine.
All right, are you working on putting that together?
I am.
Because we're going to need, there's, there's a contribution, a surplus number that we'll need, because we'll have to make that adjustment.
Do you want us to make some more adjustments, and then we'll just do it once?
If you would like to. Floor is yours, Mr. Timmy.
Maybe Mr. Bateson can help me here. I don't see it on my sheet.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Okay. Revenue first with the Parks and Rec. Do you have that?
No, I have that on this sheet. I think she got it. I'm going to go right down to expenses where you were, Mike. Down at the third.
Okay.
I am going to go, Department 7010, Library Main. We have a vacancy right now for a technical services librarian. I'd like to make, make a motion to put that on a vacancy hold for the 2017-18 year, in the amount of $98,633.
Is there a second?
Yes, second now.
All right. That amendment is now before us. My concern with that is kind of the same issue as we, in order to deal with the $500,000 mid-year cut we got, we did ask that be put on hold. By putting it on hold for a whole other year, that does some significant harm to library operations, as Ms. Ronald was good enough to step us through during the Board of Finance meetings. And again, if we take it out now, it's not likely to come back. We can't, we're taking out all these things, that is a big tax cliff we're setting ourselves up for.
Now, to that point, now, all we're doing, we're not closing out a position, we're putting that on a vacancy hold.
Yes.
We're not taking out, I'm not seeing the.
But the dollars are not there to fund it, so it's gone for the year.
Correct. Now, if Ms. Ronald, now, what I see this as, and I see your point, being the manager of the town and doing what you do, if this turns into an issue, there's nothing precluding Ms. Ronald from coming back in her budget year and going to the Board of Finance and saying, I can't live with this. Transfer it out of contingency. There's nothing to stop her from doing that, because the position is there, it's just not funded.
We don't have enough money in contingency. This would wipe out almost half the contingency account, and it's not likely that would be approved by the Board of Finance.
I'm just saying, you're saying like, once we do this, it's closed. It's not closed.
No, it's, it's closed for the year. It's also, I'm saying it's also closed for next year, because it's setting up a tax cliff that we won't be able to increase things enough to get this back.
Well, I disagree. I think that if it does become an issue in the year, she can go and go to the Board of Finance and say, this is not working, I want that position funded. I think she could do that. I'm not saying, I'm not encouraging her to do that, but going forward, I think that, you know, I want to provide management tools for you and other, that you have maintained these open positions, so that you can move people around within departments if something, something need be. That's the way I look at this.
Yeah, and I'm trying to explain, that's not the way it works, because you can't go to contingency and add back a person, because then you're in essence creating a tax increase to the following year. So typically, we don't use contingency to add back in people, because it's a long-term decision. Contingency is something we deal with one-time occurrences that happen during the year, like an excess snowplow, snow clearing expense, that type of thing. However, the items before us, any further discussion on that amendment? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I'm opposed. The amendment passes, and that reduces expenses by $98,000. Next up, do you have anything else?
There was the reduction for that position for Social Security as well, which is Department Number 7010, Social Security Line 52200, Social Security, a reduction for $2,924.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion on that? All in favor of the reduction?
Aye.
All opposed? That's me. Item passes. Any others?
Yeah, Department 1270, Legal Services, Object Number 53200, Fees and Professional Services. I'd like to reduce that $38,000 to bring it in line with current year.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, and bring it in line with overall, or do you know?
I think it was this year, projected.
Right, but this year, projected, we didn't have the tax appeals that we're looking at necessarily, because the year was lower than that. You realize that?
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm opposed. Item passes. Next.
We had another, we're going to do a vacancy hold at the Parks and Rec Department, and that position, it's Department Number 7050, Parks and Rec, Object Number 51010, and we're reducing that $98,633.
No, I'm sorry. Correct that amount to $50,00713.
Sorry.
Correct.
And what is that vacancy hold?
That one is for the Assistant Director that's going to be retiring in the middle of 2018.
Wow, so you're making adjustments based on somebody who may or may not retire?
It's an announced retirement.
No, it's not.
I thought somebody was leaving.
You can't, we don't.
Oh, is it the current vacancy?
Current vacancy.
Which one, which one's that?
The Assistant Director. Direct Secretary.
Yeah, that's the one. That's the one I was talking about. I'm sorry. That's the one I'm talking about. All right. Yeah, I got to get, all right, so then I hit the wrong number. Okay, do we have that number? While she looks that up, do you want me to go to another one?
No, I'd like to, okay. I'd like to understand, you're, this, you're talking about eliminating that position for the year?
Anthony's old, yes.
For the year.
Yes, the year.
So that's another cliff, that's another cliff we're building out of. Anthony, do you want the budget book? Yeah, my caution would be that making adjustments before somebody actually retires is difficult.
I meant Anthony's position.
Okay.
That's what I meant. I'm sorry about that.
Because we've had people change back at the last minute based on changes in personal circumstances or situations. So that puts us in a very difficult position.
No, I thought, I thought Anthony was Assistant Director.
Well, can you take time to explain how that, wow, that's working for the whole year?
Yes.
So we're asking Anthony to do basically both jobs, his old job and his new job as Director.
I think, yeah. I mean, you could look at it that way, yeah.
We have a figure.
What's the figure?
The annual figure, full, full month, $57,816.
Say that again? Eight one six? And we're going to need the Social Security on that, too. Say it again?
$5,188.
Okay. So I'd like to restate that to five, $57,816.
$67,816 is the salary and five one eight eight, six seven.
Six seven, sorry.
For the full year.
All right, Mr. Timmy, I assume your second still holds with that?
I'm going to second that. This is something which wasn't taken lightly. It's one of those things which goes back to the overall position we're in the state, where we are with asking for employees to, I mean, not employees, you know, doing the hiring freezes. You see this happening everywhere going across. Right now, it's a hiring freeze. Anthony's just taken over. This is going to give him an opportunity to assess the overall department. Maybe this position could be turned into something else, and I look forward to hearing his recommendations for this moving forward.
I've seen you've had some discussions with Mr. Calabrese about that before cutting it?
I have not, no. I believe Mr. Bateson has.
Okay, well.
I ran it by him, you know? Kind of happy, not happy? You know? I agree, I see exactly the way Chris does. I mean, Anthony's a young guy stepping into a role, he can remake this department into what he wants, how he sees it. And, you know, maybe that's a position he can lessen, increase, I don't know. I see it as a management tool that he can use going forward. And you're right, you know, to what Chris said, I don't take these decisions lightly. I don't. But, you know, I mean, I read the newspapers, I see what's going on. West Hartford, over 200 teachers. This problem's getting serious.
Problem is serious. It, when we look at doing it here, it helps to not make eleventh-hour decisions. My concern is, we haven't had time to think this through. We haven't had time to talk to Anthony. Heck, Anthony hasn't technically been taken, appointed to his new position yet. So it puts him in a very uncomfortable position with his work. But also, just from a Fairfield standpoint, we're talking about making sure that we're doing our best to maintain the quality of services. If the issue is, let's just cut things back and reduce the quality of services and lower the services, we can certainly eliminate programs and do that. And that is not what people are moving to Fairfield for, so. And especially, taking, you know, this much of a hit on a town side. I realize we work very hard to protect the education side, but the corollary to that, or the balance of that should not be, not to just take everything out of the town side, because we have town side services that everybody gets to participate in. All of our citizens, whether they have kids in the school or not, get to participate in this. And again, when we make these cuts, these are not coming back next year. And the one point we're in agreement on is, the state's in rough shape. I don't see the state solving that problem in the next 12 months. I don't, their problems are going to get worse. Excuse me, Mr. Bateson. I don't see the state solving that problem in the next 12 months. And so I think we're just setting ourselves up for a tax cliff, and I don't see these things coming back.
I want to be clear, these, these positions can come back in the 19 budget. They're not getting eliminated.
Practically, they are.
They're vacancy hold. No, you, we walked through this in conservation, when Mr. Carey said he's putting a position on vacancy hold, and that's the first time I've ever heard of this term. And it intrigued me. You're holding it for a year, the department reserves the right to fund it in 19. That's exactly what this is.
The department reserved the right to fund it in 18, and we cut it. And we're going to cut it in 19. If we don't have the money in 18, we're not going to have any extra money in 19. In fact, we're going to have less.
I disagree. It can be funded in 19. The position's not being eliminated, it's not being funded.
The fact that it's not being eliminated, it has no dollars, it's effectively defunded and can't be filled.
Defunded, defunded, that's it. Not eliminated, defunded.
That's the same.
Big difference.
No, there's not, actually. There's not a single difference. The other piece is that, if, I am amazed that you think that the state is going to have a better situation in a year than they are now. I just am amazed at that.
No, I think this is preparing us for what's coming. I think that's, that's what we're trying to do. And if we can learn to live with less, then I think we need to start that, that, that
The, learning to live with less means having a plan on how to do that and how to restructure that. If you just want to cut services and programs, we can do that. And unfortunately, that's what I fear is going to happen, is we'll just go back and make the adjustments in services, and rather than, because I don't see any other way to accomplish this, but I don't see this coming back. I don't see the money being available 12 months from now, it's not there now. And I haven't heard anybody at any level talk about the state having fixed their problems by then.
Okay, and to start off the budget process, you proposed a budget with a 4.5% tax increase. Governor Malloy basically doubled down and said, the Fairfield's losing everything. We went through over 20 hours of budget meetings where we met with department heads. We talked specifically about what you can live without, what you can live without. The cuts which were implemented or proposed, I'm sure had some vetting behind them. And that's essentially what we're sticking to, the vetting which was done before. And we have a couple more adjustments we're going to make, and that's, that's my position.
Yeah, I understand. Just to be clear, this was not one of the cuts that was proposed. So this was not one of the ones that was vetted. This is an eleventh-hour change without talking to the Director and asking how he's going to handle that. He's not even in a position yet, and I think that puts a new Director in a very difficult position. I think that, so from that standpoint, I don't see, and in the 20 hours of budget sessions, and I did sit through on them all, this wasn't discussed. So when you're talking about vetting, no, this wasn't vetted. And that's why I'm concerned about eleventh-hour changes. That's where governments typically get in trouble with making changes at the eleventh hour, where they're having had a chance to talk through those. So, all right. So I think, do we have the numbers correct on that, Mr. Bateson, now?
67,816, Lynda?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so that's the amendment that's before us. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's me. Moving on.
I'll go with the Social Security on that next.
Okay.
Department 7050.
Mm-hmm.
Object 52200, Social Security, I believe it was $5,188.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm against that. That passes. Anything else?
We wanted to raise the revenue.
Yeah, I think we should get the contribution to surplus. We're done on this third area, if you want to get a contribution to surplus number?
Okay.
Lynda, can you take the changes we made before and the most recent ones and identify what 10% of that would be? The adjustment to the contribution to surplus should be 10% of whatever the reduction is.
Right. I don't have a subtotal, though.
Lynda, we need the adjustment to the contribution to surplus. So we've just listed a whole bunch of expense reductions. You could total those up, give us 10% of that number, so we can make that the adjustment Could you say that out loud and distinctly, please?
The incremental cut to contribution to surplus, based on all those adjustments, is 770. But you've already made a motion to cut the contribution to surplus 190 for your first set of adjustments, 60 for your second set of adjustments, and now 770. So the total cut.
No, we just need, I think.
This one is 770.
I think we need just the incremental cut, because.
Then that's 770.
All right, if that's okay with the board.
They already did the other two cuts.
Cutting surplus an additional $770,000.
I just wanted to explain the full cut.
All right, if that's an agreement, can I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, any further discussion on the cut to surplus? All in favor?
Aye.
And then, Lynda, can you give us what the total budget now stands at?
I want to do a one.
And also, were there other things you want to do?
I just want to do one revenue adjustment for Penn Field.
All right, please go right ahead.
Sure. And just, the last night's recapping meeting, did they increase the rate for?
As of May first, 2017.
Okay, all right, so the number we talked about for increasing the revenue, the rent revenue, is still accurate?
Yes. The number represented by the Board of Finance the back there.
Yes, the second time.
The number represented at once.
That was a luxury phrase. Thursday night, is what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Chris, were you there Thursday night?
Yeah, I was there Thursday night.
Is that the number you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, I think we have an agreement.
Yes, we do.
What number do you have?
at Object Number 0107, Line Item 42510, Penfield rental, an increase of $100,000.
All right, Linda, did you get that? All right, anything else?
No.
No.
Mr. Bateson?
No.
All right, Linda, if you can give us a total of where we are for the budget and what the current increase in the mill rate is.
What do we have to do? We have to put the budget as amended? Just ask for a...
Well, we'll go through and do WPCA next.
Yeah.
Then we'll go back and do the overall budget as amended, including revenues, general fund revenue expenses, and WPCA.
They're going to have to restate all those numbers, or no?
No.
No?
No, then we'll just have... We'll have the goals.
As amended.
Yeah, as amended.
Do you want to give them like a five-minute break so they get the number right? There's no pressure or something?
Linda, would you guys like a bit of a break here?
Yeah.
Hey, how long? Five minutes, 10 minutes, enough? All right, let's take a five-minute break. $100,000 to Parks and Rec revenue.
Yes.
All right, so we didn't officially pass that, so I'm going to ask for a motion to increase Parks and Rec revenue in the line that you said, Chris?
Yes, it's 01007. And then that's Object Number, Line Number 42510, Penfield rental, an increase of $100,000.
Okay, that's $100,000 up. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, now, we discussed this briefly before. Linda, you say you have included this in the numbers you have? All in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
Aye. So Linda, given that, now, please tell us where the budget is and what the increase is and what the mill rate is, if you would.
The budget is $298,47,150.
Well, would you please say that a little clearer, please? Thank you. That's $298,47,150 is now where the budget stands at the moment. And that's... Can you give me the mill rate or the percentage increase?
Percentage increase, one decimal, three zero.
1.3% increase in the mill rate?
Don't have that.
We didn't do that yet.
You can't read it off the chart?
It won't be exact. It may not fall. We did it every $500,000, so we want to be exact with that.
Right. When will we have the exact mill rate?
Tomorrow. Tomorrow morning.
Okay, if you could let me know that as quickly as possible so we can get that out?
Sure thing.
All right. We had put everything before us in its entirety, including WPCA. If we're done with adjustments on the general fund town side and on revenue?
Yes.
All right, so that... We've basically discussed everything that impacts the mill rate. We're now going to take a look at the WPCA, which is a separate organization that does not access the general fund. So what we're talking about now will not impact the mill rate. It will impact potentially sewer use fees that are decided by the WPCA. So I've got a few adjustments here that were worked out, and these are what I'm going to term administrative adjustments based on our discussion so far and what we've gone through during the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance meetings. These numbers have come to light. So from the start, revenue, Object 43001, current sewer use fees, and this is showing a decrease of $22,027. And that's an offset to an expenditure. May I have a second for that?
I'll second it.
Linda, could you just... Since the WPCA sets the sewer use fees, how are we making an adjustment to them here?
This is just to balance the expenses that you're adjusting. This is the first year that we're projecting their revenue. They're going to have to set their fees, but in order to have a balanced budget, this is their adjustment.
So we don't have a contingency or surplus for that organization? So you're basically taking it down to a zero balance?
Right. For the lot... For one of their revenue lines. They still have the opportunity to vote the...
Let's talk about that for next year so we know how to make that adjustment in line with what the WPCA might want us to do there. But so in the short term, did everybody understand that? And are we okay to vote on that?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
That amendment is done. Next up, on the expenditure side, Department 5040, Object Code 52100. This is an adjustment to health insurance for actives and a reduction of $11,447. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
This is based on the updated February information. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
At that moment, amendment passes. Next up, Department 5040, Object 52310, Retirement Contribution Town, a reduction of $725. This is updated per the draft pension variation. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, Department 5040, Object 52312. This is Retirement Contribution 401A. This is an increase of $20,000. So may I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the amendment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And next up, 5040. This is Object 5810. This is contingency. And this is a reduction in contingency of $29,855. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
What's this one? Just...
I believe there's a contingency account within the WPCA. Linda, can you fill us in on what this account is used for?
Yes, this is to support labor contract settlements. And this was an assumption adjustment.
I'm good. Got it.
All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that's done. And the net of all these is a total of zero. So there's no overall change to the WPCA revenues and expenses, but there has been individual line item changes. So given all that, given the entire budgets before that, what I'd like to do, unless there's any further discussion by the board? Ready to go? And I'd like to have a vote on the overall budget as recommended and as amended. And this includes revenue, town general fund balances, and the WPCA. All in favor of the amended budget?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. We're done. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.